Good evening and welcome to the Township of South Orange Village Planning Board Regular Meeting for Monday, October 6, 2014. Jada, will you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rosna.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Lerman.
Here.
And Ms. Harris.
Here.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2014 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2013, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. Everyone has a copy of tonight's agenda? Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on Monday, July 7, 2014. If the -- unless there are any comments, I'll take a motion to accept.
So move.
Okay. Move and second. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, two abstentions. The minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda, approval of resolution, case number 237, Clean Land LLC, Block 1007, Lot 22, 125 South Orange Avenue, preliminary and final site plan. Applicant proposes to use the premises as a drop-off and pickup facility for dry cleaning. Applicant intends to modify the exterior front facade in accordance with the plan. I believe that the resolution was circulated to those members who are -- well, to the board, but, Jada, we're not all eligible to vote, including myself, so could you please indicate which members are eligible to vote?
Mr. Allen, Mr. Lerman, Mr. Lerner, Mr. Miller, Reverend Wilson.
So if we can wait -- we'll wait a moment and Reverend Wilson can join us and then she can take part and vote.
This was all this.
Can let the record reflect that Reverend Wilson is joining us at this point in the meeting. And want to call the roll for those eligible members to vote on this resolution.
Do you need a motion?
We need a motion.
Ah, sorry, that's a good way to start. How about a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
I'll move.
Thank you. And we have a second from Reverend Wilson.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lerman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Lerner?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Sorry, I guess I'm in a little bit too much of a rush this evening. My apologies. Next item on the agenda, application to be heard, case number 231, Luther P. Turner, Jr. and Hazel A. Turner, Block 704, Lot 1, 14 Kingman Road, minor subdivision. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. I'd like for council to provide us with an update on this matter, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is now prepared to proceed with this application. Has asked the board if they are able to go ahead with what they have already in their packets or need additional information. There are some revisions they want to make. The extent of them, I don't know at this point.
Okay. So can you just clarify for those of the members, you know, even just to refresh the memory, because it's now an old case? What was going on with this case and why is it that it's actually able to be heard at this point?
This was an application to subdivide a lot on South Orange Avenue and Kingman Road and to two lots. It's a fairly substantial-sized lot. Resulting, two lots would be undersized, so they requested a variance. Because it's in the Montrose Historic District, there was a referral to the Historic Preservation Commission, and when they reviewed it, they denied the application. As far as they were concerned, it should not go forward. It was a subdivision which they have the right to weigh in on. The applicant then appealed that denial, and the appeal, according to our ordinance, goes to the zoning board. So the denial of their application to the Historic Preservation Commission was then sent to the zoning board. The zoning board heard it. The zoning board took a real hard look at the ordinance and said, "There's a flaw in the ordinance. The way it's written, it needs to be strengthened up. There's basically a loophole there." And the way we read it, the zoning -- I'm interpreting the zoning board said, "The way we read the ordinance, we don't think that they needed to go to get that HPC approval because of the way the ordinance is worded." That ordinance apparently is going to be subject to some revisions. It needs to be -- based on that, it gave clearance from the Historic Preservation's denial, and the applicant is now free to come here and seek the subdivision they originally asked back in July of 2013. But the HPC can, of course, still weigh in to this board and give its advice about whether or not it thinks it's a good idea.
Okay. And it's my understanding that they wish to be heard not at our next meeting in November, but at the meeting subsequent on December 1st?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any action that needs to be taken?
We need to see if everyone on the board now has the full application. And we have to -- they've asked us, they've asked the board to, as a means of saving costs on their end, they didn't want to supply the application again, plus they've made a revision, I don't know what it is, and they were trying not to have to provide the 20 copies that the ordinance requires them to provide, and they asked, their council asked me if the board would waive any of that, and that's something the board needs to take up.
Okay. So in July of 2013, at least some of the people who are here weren't even on the board. Do we have excess materials, even if we wished to say we didn't want to get it? I'm asking. Jada, do you open it up?
I saw a few sets left, not many.
Okay. And those who were on the board in July of 2013, do we, you even still have it? Okay. I would recommend then that, I mean, unless anybody feels differently that we ask -- yes, Jada?
Could we recommend a digital copy? Maybe that's something, because this is not a very detailed construction plan, but maybe, or architectural plan, but maybe it's just a site plan, we can print it out ourselves? In the sense where we can maybe print it up in the office with 11 by 17 or something?
Yeah. I'm concerned that if we say yes to this, how many others, what other requests will follow?
So we'll ask them to provide then another, you know, 20 sets of the applications with the revised plans. You'll inform council?
I will.
Okay. Are there anything else that needs to be discussed as it relates to this?
Because it was filed so long ago, I can't recall, did the Historic Preservation Commission send their letter to hear, or they just heard the case on their own?
We did not, we did not receive a letter.
You may want to ask Mr. Chairman if the board would like that.
Would the board be interested in receiving any letters, correspondence relating to this matter from the Historic Preservation Commission? Well, we can all --
Are they going to appear, they're going to appear before the planning board, or we don't know?
Did they indicate one way or the other?
No, the HPC, are they planning on coming?
I haven't heard.
Is there any noticing provisions that they have to meet?
For this application, yes.
This is a variance, so yes.
So this is as if it's a new app, is this to the public, it's if it's a new application?
Sure.
They may try to rely on the notice they gave last year, but as far as I'm concerned,
they need to be noticed.
Okay. Okay, yes?
I have quite a legal question, since it was referred to the zoning board. Does the zoning board maintain jurisdiction for this?
No. The only piece of it that went to the zoning board was an appeal from the HPC, and that's the only piece that went to the zoning board, and that's all, the only rule they play.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, what was the flaw in the HPC ordinance, the Star Commission ordinance?
There is a word. There is, part of it talks about contributing properties, and another part of it talks about key contributing properties, and whether or not they're identified as such.
Oh, what?
And it became gray to the zoning board, whether or not they had sufficiently identified those properties that needed to be subject to their review.
Okay.
I think, my guess is when you see the plans, they'll be clear, and I also guess that the HPC will make an appearance, a statement during the hearings, and they'll explain it.
Okay. Is it appropriate for the zoning board to make any kind of statement or appearance here, or that's really not appropriate in this case?
I don't believe it would be, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, so you'll advise council for the Turners, and we'll look forward to seeing them at the December 1st meeting, and we'll get the material. Please make sure to advise them we want the materials, you know, as if it were a new application, so whatever it is, 20, 25, 30 days in advance. Okay, so those are our items, those are our business items. Now we're on to our discussions. First item, report from the Board of Trustees members regarding the Planning and Zoning Committee. This is a new item, started the last meeting. Mark, would you be in a position to tell us anything going on at the Board of Trustees level concerning things that may or may not be coming to this board at some point in the future?
I think the biggest thing coming forward is the third item on the discussion, which is the RFP and the master plan.
Okay.
And the rehabilitation plan.
Okay.
The redevelopment stuff, which is, we've already seen firsthand. I think those are the three biggest items that really --
Okay. We know you're sort of getting back in the swing of things, too, so we're really glad to see you here after --
Thank you.
-- an absence. Does anybody have any questions about anything in particular at this point? Okay. So moving on to the next item, a report from the Board Planner regarding the Irvington Avenue redevelopment study. Susan?
Rehabilitation.
Well, this one actually is Irvington Avenue redevelopment. It doesn't actually say rehab, but, you know, if you could, Susan, also talk about the rehabilitation plan at this point as well?
Is this on? Okay, okay. The rehabilitation, let me start with the redevelopment studies, okay? As I noted from last month, we were gathering information, we'd received information, we're still awaiting some additional information from the village that we expect to get. It's important to gather everything, all the facts, before then you look at it and evaluate each site, and to determine whether it meets the substantial evidence criteria in order to recommend, to give this board an opinion as to whether there's substantial evidence. But subsequent to that, there, we have had an area in site visit. We went out with a construction code official, we have photos and visual inspections, spoke with a number of the business people and the property owners out there. There were two community meetings that also had been noted previously. Those meetings, one was in the morning, Michael was there in the morning one, and then there was a subsequent the next day in the evening, in order to provide input and any questions or comments from the community as to the process and the substance. So those two did occur.
Were they well attended? I'm sorry.
They were. They were, they were well attended, and there were, as to be expected, there were a number of questions. It was a constructive discussion, I thought, and, yeah, I think everybody went, at least went home, not necessarily agreeing with everything, but certainly feeling that they had the opportunity to be there and to ask the questions.
Well-attended is 100, well-attended is 50, well- --
Well-attended 50?
Danny, you need, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. About 50, I would say, maybe less, maybe 30, 30 to 50, it depends on which day it was. But it was, it was good. It was good. That, to me, is a, is a well-attended, well-attended meetings, because even if it's 30 each meeting, that's 60 people that came out. They, some were there, loved it so much that they came back. But there were new people there as well, new faces. Okay? So, so assuming that we received the information this week, we anticipate that we will wrap this up ideally, so that you will have it before the next meeting. However, however, I would note that there's quite a bit of notice that has to happen prior to you having your public hearing. So you may have it, but you may not be ready to have the public hearing on it at the next meeting.
Can you be more specific?
Sure. Normally, normally there is, with everything that occurs, and this is different notice than what you would do for an application, okay? That's straightforward, 10 days before you notice 200 feet. That's not the way this works. You notice the general public, and you notice the property owners and anyone that has interest in the properties that are being studied. And generally speaking, it's about a three-week period to get out the notices for, for those to everybody in that period. Sometimes it can be a little less, but --
Are there two notices, Susan, or one?
Excuse me?
Is it twice or once?
Twice. The general is twice, the minimum is the week before, at least a week before the hearing, but then it has to be the week before that. So once you start pulling that in, it really comes out to two to three weeks beforehand that you have to notice. But in order to notice, you have to have the study on file. So, because anyone, any member of the public can come and look at the study to be able to be informed, to come to, whether they agree or want to make comments, to come to this board.
So you're really looking at February?
No.
Allowing for holidays and not having it?
No, I was going to say, if you wanted to, you could probably target December. That's up to, that's, I'm just, I wouldn't target November, because that wouldn't really, the timing wouldn't work, but you may, depending, you could target that. But that's, that's your call. That is not, that's your call.
Well, it'll be dependent upon when the study is ready for our review, so, so at the moment, it's still a lot of hypotheticals. If it's not ready until, you know, October 30th, it's going to be a moot point, so. Not saying it will, just saying if it were. So, so in any case, any other questions at this point? Okay. Susan, do you want to talk about the area in need of rehab as well?
Sure. And then, as the board recalls, there was also a companion study that was occurring, not surprising, dealing with whether the entire community was, met the criteria to be a rehabilitation area, an area in need of rehabilitation. And as you recall, that has different powers than being in a redevelopment area. That, you can, you do not have the option of eminent domain, and you do not have the option of long-term tax abatement. Those are the two key differences. The criteria are different as well. These are much more, the criteria for rehab are much more black and white, kind of dry statistical, as you can tell from this study, which is, which has been submitted, and basically one of the standards is that the majority of the housing stock is over 50 years old in age, and that it can, it can, a, a, what should I say? A program of rehabilitation could assist improving and maintaining that housing stock. So that is what is the intent, those two things. The housing stock is old, it doesn't have to be deteriorated, but a program of maintenance and rehab could assist it. So as you, as noted in the report, more than 70% of the housing stock in the township was built prior to 1960. And what we've tried to do is lay out those, as much as we could, lay that out, the details, but it's pretty clear, it meets it. And that there, a program of rehabilitation due to the housing stock would be very helpful. You know, you could, you could create incentives that provide the basis for people to upgrade their homes, and that is the intent. And there are some units that are statistically defective, according to the COA standards and the US Census. There's approximately 70 units in the, in the township that are deemed deficient. So certainly that's something else that would, could be addressed. So that's basically, as a result of that, it was deemed that it does meet the criteria under the, under the redevelopment statute, because rehab goes under the redevelopment statute, that it could be deemed an area in need of rehab.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions for Susan about the report?
I do have one.
Yes?
The one thing that caught my eye was the known contaminated sites, the map, and it says a remediation program is underway. Well, if it is, it's invisible on some of these sites. So I would just love to get some, just some more information about it.
We, the, the recent redevelopment law was changed in December of last year to permit contaminated sites to be considered as one of the factors that can be looked at. And the way that we looked at it was, we looked at, New Jersey DEP has lists of known contaminated sites, and we looked at the status of those, whether there was anything on, and then the status of those. So we do not have any more information on that. It is, was not critical to our assessment, because on its own, the age of housing stock would meet in itself the criteria without the contaminated site consideration, and clearly that would be something that, when you're doing the redevelopment plan, that that could be a factor if you get to that stage. But it's not a fatal flaw as it relates to this phase.
Well, the only thing is, some of these sites are on the redevelopment plan, and what caught my eye is remediation is underway, and if the state is saying that, they must have some information as to what they recommended for remediation. I'm just, just be curious. I mean, just because it's not part of the plan, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have the information.
I think the question is, who is going to ferret that information now?
Well, somebody has to contact the state, I guess, and find out if their map shows that remediation is underway and a program has been determined, what is that program? And is it really underway?
And I come back to the same question. Who is responsible for that?
Well, somebody should be responsible. I don't care if our, if our town engineer does it, or our consultants do it, but somebody should do it.
I'll nominate Adam to ask tomorrow, to see if he can find out who's.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you.
You didn't have nothing to do tomorrow, anyway.
Any other questions for Susan at this time? Can we, can you just elaborate on what the process is? We're not going to take any action this evening, but can you elaborate on what steps we should or need to take, if any?
Yeah, it, it would be, it's, again, we've spoken about the fact that this isn't as cumbersome a process as the area in need of, in the, the area in need of redevelopment process, because, frankly, because there isn't any long-term tax abatement in eminent domain as part of this process. So there is no quote hearing, public hearing, as there is under the other. It would be helpful, though, because the, the Board of Trustees is the one that ultimately makes that determination by resolution, and they're, they would like some input from you as to whether you accept the study and, and recognize and recommend that the area be deemed that it meets the criteria, and that it be deemed, the entire township be deemed an area in need of rehabilitation. That, at this point, is the only thing. However, as with an area in need of redevelopment, if it's designated, the next step is a plan. And that's for another day as such, but that's the next phase. But first, you have to determine whether the area is an area deemed to be, meets the criteria.
Okay. So I would just ask my fellow members for the next meeting, please take a moment to read the report that was provided earlier today, and be prepared for discussion we might have on that subject. Thank you, Susan. Final item for discussion, discussion and approval of the proposed RFP for the master plan, and I'll give that over to Michael.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Harris, Lillian, and Neil for really doing the bulk of this work and constructing the meat of the RFP. I believe we've sent it out to the entire board to read, and I think you've had it enough in advance. If there's any questions, we have three of us here to try and answer them. If not, I would love a motion to accept the rough draft of it, or not even a motion, a direction, to pass this rough draft on to the township and have them put it into final proposal.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions concerning the draft that was circulated? Okay, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with having a formal motion. I mean, you know, it gives a sign that we actually considered it and are giving a formal recommendation. So somebody wish to make a, make a motion?
And I also, I forgot, I left Adam out. He was part of this. By the way, we, before you make the motion, we've met in person, we've had several phone conferences and emails that went back and forth, so thanks to Adam's good offices that helped us with that.
Okay. All right, then, I believe we had a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second Reverend Wilson. Okay, I think we can do this by acclamation, I'm going to guess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you all, the members of this committee that worked on this, much appreciated. I'm sure the Board of Trustees will feel the same way. And if, is there any other business? Yes?
I had a, I don't know if it's a motion at this point, but I was, I would like to, there's a couple of parts here. One is like, can we, as a board, be paperless? And what would be the savings to the village if we became a paperless board? Because, I mean, we get stacks and stacks of paper, and I'm just like, we all may look at it, I don't know, but it's like, it, there's got to be, we must be spending thousands of dollars on printing each year, and so I thought I'd bring that up tonight.
Well, the applicants are required, under our ordinance, to supply us with 20 copies of whatever they're submitting, so they bear that cost?
I'm assuming he's talking about these kind of things, like the reports that we got today, more than the, than the applicants.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in the end, I mean, ultimately, it'd be nice to have all of it, electronic, I mean.
Yeah, we've, we've discussed before, and I, and I, part of the problem is, is that I come off the train, I come right here sometimes, I prefer to have it, and I understand the cost, but I've said 100 times, the tablets today are so inexpensive, they have tablets for $50, and you can put a USB drive in, and we could be paperless on everything, including, we'd have to change the ordinance for what the applicants have to submit, but we could go to a paperless if there were tablets available for us to use.
I've seen other boards try to go -- I've seen other boards try to go paperless, and one of the issues that they run across are the plans, because it may get reduced so far, you can't read them.
Well, you could just keep everything but the plans, and everything else could go, could go paperless. But I think, I think we would have to have a backup to it. I think people would need to be able to reference it in print, and we can't ask everyone to, you know, to, some people's computers or tablets are tied to their job, and they're not allowed to put anything on it, so that becomes another issue, so, but I, you know, I've had this discussion with the Board of Trustees level too, that tablets and laptops are so inexpensive today, that we could, we probably could do it that way very easy, with a USB flash drive, you put it on there. And I, I would certainly think it's something we should probably, and I can bring it to the budget meeting for the board to discuss it.
I mean, PDFs of plans stay, they, they don't, they don't, like, pixelate, you can enlarge-
No, but it's still hard, it's easier to look at when it's open.
Sure, I mean, I, I would just say-
It's tough to scale a, a plan on a computer, and to make notes on the plan, it's very difficult to do that. You can do it on a draft, but-
I would agree that if, we may not have to go paperless, but less paper, it probably has to be phased over time, where some people have access to tablets, other people don't. But if we don't start, we'll never get there. I think we should really kind of start at some point, and I think this is as good a time as any, to talk about it, to start thinking about it. We'll put plans aside, because I agree, I can't, I try, for a living, I read plans, and I, I've tried to do it on tablets, it just never seems to work. But everything else, particularly what's generated by municipality, that's really, you know, mostly what-
With, with the advantage of using, you know, tablets or having stuff on there already too, is that you can have the minutes from past meetings easily accessible, you can have past agendas easily accessible, and it makes it actually more productive, you don't have to wait for stuff, and there, there'll be a lot of advantages to go that route. So I, I definitely think we should do it. I don't, you know, other than the plans that have to be submitted by the applicant, I think everything else could be done via tablet slash laptop.
Some of the discussions with the Village Hall renovations, we were talking that the day-
Right.
-we'll have screens built into them, so that agendas and minutes and those kind of things will be built in, so we're not going to have to print those things out. So if we move back to Village Hall, that's hopefully something that we'll be looking forward to.
Five years from now, though, we would have tablets, so it'd be something else anyway.
In the meantime, though, I was just going to suggest, I mean, you know, before the meeting, we all were sent a copy of the agenda. We were all sent a copy of the redevelopment status, and we were all sent a copy of the rehabilitation study. I think what we could say is that, and I, and I recognize that there are some people who, you know, grab their stuff right off the, you know, they're coming right here, and maybe they don't, you know, don't bring it with them, what have you, but I think what we could do is at least, if you don't need these items that are being sent out prior to the meeting, then I think each one of us that does not feel that they need it should inform, and I don't mean specific to the document, I mean just generally, if it's been sent out in advance, I don't need it, should inform Jettie of that. And then you'll just make fewer copies, and just those who indicated they might need them, you'll have them here. So, you know, I, I, maybe that's a good, maybe that's a good start, I mean-
Absolutely.
Not a bad idea.
I mean, that's a great work, I mean, double-sided, there's a whole lot, lot of ways that we could do things just to reduce it. I just, I mean, I've just, being a part of this, you know, it's getting bigger, and you know, it just becomes really noticeable, and I'm like, well, what do I do with this?
Just don't think I'm rude if I'm looking at my phone during the meeting then, because-
Well, the prime example is this report. This came to us in advance. I printed out, I think, three pages. I certainly didn't print out the lot and blocks. And yet I didn't know we were getting this handed to us, so I wouldn't have, I would have saved at least four pages.
Well, I, I just bring it up because I know it's not going to happen overnight, I just think that if we start to try, if we do a volunteer, we start to see how many people don't need it, you know, we can, you know-
It's a very, it's a very good point, I think it's well-taken, and I would urge those of us who don't feel that they need to have it brought with them, you know, brought, made available to them in hard copy at the meeting to inform Jettie in advance, and we'll only have that, those number of copies that we need. And I'm sure somebody forgets, we can always share anyway, so it'll work out okay.
The problem that you have, you know, just when you get a consultant's report, or even a report from an applicant, you know, you're making notes on that report without taking your computer with you. You know, your notes are almost meaningless without having the plan in front, or their report in front.
Look, arguably, arguably, some people, you know, you have, you know, on your computer or your iPad, you can have, or whatever device you use, you can have, you know, you can make notes on notes programs, I mean, you know, there, and programs get more and more sophisticated-
Some of us aren't sophisticated as you may be, thank you.
Yeah, I was just using example, others might do.
Thank you.
But the, but, but, I'm just saying, there, there are perhaps those people who don't, which, I'm not, and again, we're not talking, at least not yet, about the applications. The applications you're going to get, and still scribble all over those.
It's the agendas and minutes that we're going to-
But we're talking, we're talking about these kinds of things that, that we, you know, could probably do without having printed them out. I mean, it's, you know, so we'll, we'll start with that, and then as time goes on, we can talk about other, other possibilities.
We'll have tablets, be able to watch the videos at prior meetings, just to see what an applicant said.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Neil, appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Adam, are you going to say something?
Stay home, we're not coming here, we can just have-
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, no. Thank you very much. Next meeting will be Monday, November 3, 2014, 7:30 here at SoPAC, see you then.